I’m going to call the August 7th, 2012. Good afternoon, everyone. I’m going to call the August 7th, 2012 City Council Meeting to order. Please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
House.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
White.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Item number one.
Employee recognition service award pins.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong.
Yes, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. As you know, every month we present service award pins to employees who are celebrating important anniversaries. And this month, there are several, and I’d like to read their names in the record. And then we have two employees who are here to receive pins from the mayor. So first, with five years, Max Kachanian, who’s a project engineer in Public Works, Jennifer Burt, who is a laboratory analyst II in Public Works, and Gurpal Sandhu, who’s a control systems operations specialist in Public Works, and Jeanette Prozinski, who’s an administrative specialist at the waterfront. With 10 years, Yvette Wa, engineering technician II in Public Works, Andrew Rhodes, who’s our water treatment superintendent in Public Works, and Jeff Schultz, who’s a waterfront maintenance worker at the waterfront. With 15 years, Randy Ward, senior Public Works inspector. With 25 years and here to receive a pin, Andrea Befano, who’s our senior rental housing mediation specialist, who I think many of you know from the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force. And with 30 years, Michelle Decant, who’s our Public Works business manager.
We’ll start with Andrea. Come on up.
Thank you.
You’re welcome. Andrea Befano was hired as a temporary employee in the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force program in June of 1987, and shortly thereafter was hired permanently as a Community Services Specialist I. In March of 1988, Andrea was promoted to Rental Housing Mediation Specialist and promoted again in ’94 to Senior Rental Housing Mediation Specialist, which is the position she holds today. Andrea has worked with countless Santa Barbara residents, assisting both tenants and landlords in rental housing disputes. She’s gained the respect and trust of both landlords and tenants, resulting in an overall success rate for mediations of approximately 95 percent. Andrea has developed a comprehensive training program for volunteer mediators, including mock mediations, developed informational leaflets to provide information on specific subjects related to rental housing rules and regulations, and educated students at UCSB’s Law and Society Program and Santa Barbara City College’s Adult Ed Civics Course on Mediation Techniques. Andrea has received numerous awards and commendations during her 25 years of service, including Employee of the Month in 1989, an Unsung Hero Award from the Santa Barbara News Press in 2005, and Employee of the Quarter in 2009. Andrea has also collected numerous thank you notes from clients, which describe her as professional, knowledgeable, competent, pleasant, and kind-hearted. And so it’s my pleasure to honor you today for your 25 years of service to the city of Santa Barbara. On behalf of the City Council, we congratulate you on this admirable achievement. Thank you so much for your service.
I would like to thank our honorable mayor, Helene Schneider, and our distinguished council members for this special recognition and their continued support of the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force. We are the safety net preventing many families from homelessness and costly litigation. Mary Parker Folet, an early American pioneer in scientific management, once said, “We must heroically seek by whatever hardship, by whatever toil, the methods by which people can agree.” The power of mediation to bring people together in agreement over disputes is a valuable asset. The work we do directly benefits landlords and tenants alike, not only keeping families together, but by strengthening our community. I would also like to thank our 15 city council-appointed mediators, whose focus is in giving back to the community by giving them their time and expertise. A special thanks to our founding member, Silvio De Loretto, who is here today.
Silvio.
And his very lovely partner in life, Mary McDonald. Silvio has been an active member since 1976 and continues his dedication to the program. 25 years ago, my law studies bridged my interest to the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force, which was in its early development. We grew together, and I found my true vocation in mediation services. So I thank our city for giving me the opportunity to do what I love, helping people resolve their housing disputes. To my family, friends, and colleagues, my appreciation for their valuable support and teamwork throughout the years. Many are here today.
Thank you. Thank you.
Success is felt most when there is a network of loving, caring people standing beside you. I feel both honored and successful today. A friend asked me to sum up my 25 years of mediation services. What came to mind was admiration for the strength, courage, and heartfelt desire of our residents to help each other and work through their differences. And a single wish: May we live that each tomorrow find all of us within our community better than today. Thank you. Thank you for this award.
We now bring up Michelle Decant. There’s your pins. Michelle Decant began her career with the city of Santa Barbara as an accounting clerk in the Finance Department on August 9th, 1982. She moved up quickly, promoting to Senior Accounting Clerk in April of ’84 and Principal Accounting Clerk in February of ’1985. Michelle left the Finance Department in December of ’1988, following a promotion to Clerical Services Supervisor for the Planning Division of the Community Development Department. She held various positions in community development, including Administrative Supervisor, Administrative Analyst I and II, and Administrative Services Manager. Among her many special assignments and accomplishments was the 2007 major repair and remodel of the second floor of 630 Garden Street, which included staff relocations off-site and in trailers, and numerous cubicle adjustments projects over the years. Michelle achieved significant personal and professional growth in attaining her Bachelor of Science degree in business through her initial enrollment at Santa Barbara City College, followed by graduating from Cal State Channel Islands, all while continuing to work full-time and maintaining a high-quality work performance. In October of 2009, Michelle was promoted to her current position of Business Manager for the Public Works Department, where she’s been commended numerous times for her unfaltering dedication to her work and her conscientious efforts working with department budgets. Michelle has received many swift award recognitions and notable praise for going above and beyond the call of duty by providing consistent and accurate budgeting and accounting work in her day-to-day responsibilities and on a variety of project assignments. Michelle is also a lead resource for the city as a whole in her role as backup to the manager of the Emergency Operations Center. Michelle lives in Santa Barbara, and she’s an avid bicyclist and enjoys skiing, traveling, volunteering with Toastmasters, the County Bowl, and the YMCA, spending time with family and friends. And Michelle, it’s my honor to honor you today for your 30 years of service to the city of Santa Barbara. On behalf of the City Council, congratulations on this admirable achievement. And thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. And I’d also like to thank all the folks that put together this nice write-up on me. As many of those have said before me, you never thought that you would be here this long. It’s true. Things in the city have kept changing, and I was having opportunities offered, and I have stayed and stayed and haven’t left yet. While working for the city, as I stated, I’ve been afforded great opportunities to learn a lot. I have fostered incredible friendships, and I feel like I’ve been an asset with the city. I can only hope in the remaining years that I have, I continue to learn, that I continue my good friendships, and that I continue to be a valuable asset to the city. Thank you.
You both have a big crowd. I would just ask, as you leave, to do so quietly and keep your conversations outside, because we actually have a council meeting, but congratulations to you all. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren’t, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So, public comment. I have a couple of speaker slips. I do, I didn’t see a slip, but I want to invite Alex from our Way High Sister City group to come up. And last week, we had people from Toba, Japan, and today, we have people from Way High, China, two great sister cities. I’m going to welcome you. If you could state your name for the record and...
Thank you. My name is Alex Sheldon. I’m the president of the Santa Barbara Way High Sister City Association, and this is the second year we’ve hosted students from our sister city in Way High, China. Last summer, we had 10 students, and this summer, we brought 15. And I was able to travel to Way High in 2009, and I taught English at a high school in Way High, and now, we’ve been able to host students two summers in a row, and we’d like to continue to do it. Some of the things we got to do was, we went to the Fiesta opening ceremonies, the Fiesta Parade. We’ve done a lot of shopping on State Street and have gone around to Sterns Wharf and some other places in town. I wanted to just call up the individual students, and they can say hello to the City Council as well. And we’ll start with their leader from the Foreign Relations Office in Way High. It’s Zou Deli.
Come on up. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor.
It’s on. Go ahead.
This is a distinguished city hall member, ladies and gentlemen. I’m David from Way High People’s Association for Friendship with Foreign Countries. Way High was set up as sister cities with Santa Barbara last in 1987. In these times, we set up many of the exchange, especially in culture and education. Today, I would like to take this opportunity to, especially to thank Mr. Peter.
Peter.
Oh, Peter.
There.
Who is a pioneer to set up the relationship between Way High and Santa Barbara. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Alex. His excellent and effective work for our group. I think America is a great nation. Yesterday, we went to Disneyland. I think Disneyland, it’s the premier place before it’s, before to have built Disneyland would be a desert. But now, since it’s set up in 1955, today, it becomes a real property business center and attractive a lot of the eyes from over the world. So I think America is a very great nation, and you also enjoy a larger freedom. So I think you create a lot of the imagination in the world. So everybody knows McDonald’s, everybody knows a software, software work, software work, and everybody knows Disneyland. So it’s certainly you would be created a new chief of the, new chief of the development board in the development in the future. So I also would like to take this opportunity to invite everybody, including your family, when you are coming in to visit Way High. I think you’re always welcome.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And welcome to all the students, and I hope you enjoy the rest of your trip. You’re off tomorrow to Washington, D.C., and then to New York. So have a fantastic trip the rest of the time, and we hope you come back. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you. Way High’s, Way High’s. See you at Way High.
See you in Way High. Yeah. Shee shee. I visited Way High back in 2004, and I believe the population at that point was 750,000, and I just heard it’s now 2.5 million. So, we talk about growth rate. Can you imagine that? Planned Santa Barbara update? My goodness. But congratulations. And they still have red tile roofs there, too. Okay, continuing on with public comment, we have Lori Gaskin, President Gaskin, followed by Dan Campbell. Ms. Gaskins first. There you go. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and Mayor Pro Tem Hotchkiss and council members. I wanted to, first of all, say that I am so pleased to be able to join the community of Santa Barbara in serving the educational needs of our region. And I wanted to be able to put faces to names and for you to also see me in person, so that we could begin to forge or continue to have that deep relationship and partnership that has been the hallmark of Santa Barbara City College and the city of Santa Barbara. So I thank you so very much for your determination and dedication to serve the public good in the way you do, particularly in an era of civic disengagement. You are exemplary and stellar in countering that and in stepping forward and leading our region and our city with your determination and dedication. And I also want to thank you for believing in Santa Barbara City College. We are the institution of first choice, the institution of second chance, the institution of third opportunity, and the institution of hope and potential. And through our relationships that are permanent, deep, and synergistic, you allow us to make that happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Dan Campbell will be followed by Bob Handy.
Councilman, Mayor. I’m Dan Campbell, logistic coordinator for the Santa Barbara International Marathon. I’m here for two reasons. One, to thank you, personally to thank you and our organization to thank you for supporting us since 2009 and believing in us and being able to give us this opportunity to serve Santa Barbara. Since that time, our numbers have grown from approximately 3,000 to, in 2009, about 3,100, to approximately between 6,000 and 7,000 this coming year. Our numbers have doubled. There’s many reasons for that. What we give to Santa Barbara is amazing, outside of the joy that we give to the people who run in these events. We’ll have well over 5,000 beds, being, you know, in this area that will be filled up, let alone the restaurants and the community that we try to give back, well over $100,000 to $150,000 in donations. I say that just to show you what we’re trying to give, but that’s not our objective. Our objective has not changed, but it’s to build upon what we already have. So I’m here to share something new, outside of people running down the streets in Santa Barbara and Galita, down to the finish line in that stadium at SBCC. I want you to visualize what we’re doing. We, this year and for the future years, are going to collaborate with the veterans, not just in Santa Barbara, but across the country. Through my great friend, new friend, John Blankenship, and his resources and the resources that we’ve been able to pick up, I want you to see, and this is just the beginning, and I’m not trying to scare anybody here by the numbers coming in, but I think it’s only going to be beneficial, because it is during Veterans Weekend, which is the 9th, 10th, and 11th of November. And it will stay this way for years to come. But the beginning of our race, and I just want to share with you, to visualize this piece. We’ll have 3,000 or 4,000 runners at one area, and approximately 13 miles away, we’ll have another couple of thousand runners for the full marathon, and the half marathon being here at the Page Center, and the full marathon starting at DP High School. At each place, what you’ll see is, you’ll see Bugles and Bagpipers, and they will start off, and you’ll see two beautiful fire trucks crossed with the ladders with the American flag coming down. And you’ll see, you’ll hear the Bugles, and you’ll hear the Bagpipers doing revelry. And as that song is about to finish, and this is why I don’t want to scare you, you’ll have, correct me if I’m wrong, John, but four World War II veteran airplanes, veterans, World War II planes coming through, and that will be the start of the race on the bagpipes of charge.
You need to wind up your comments, please.
Okay.
You’re at three minutes.
Okay, I’m sorry.
That’s all right.
Bottom line is, that’s just the beginning of what we’re trying to do. And I just want to share that with you, so you understand what we’re going to be doing in the future. Thank you very much for your time, and God bless.
Thank you. Bob Handy and the final speaker will be John Blankenship.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. I’m here speaking for myself and not for any organization that I’m associated with. Up until a few days, a few weeks ago now, I guess, I had never heard of Chick-fil-A. Apparently, the owner had made a statement to his religious organization that he belongs to, expressing his concern on gay marriage. And from that, there has been a helluva loo about certain mayors that have said that they don’t want Chick-fil-A in their city. And just what I read in a paper this morning, the Architectural Board of Review, members said that they were abstaining from vote because of their own personal beliefs. The Architectural Board of Review is a volunteer organization that took the same oath that you took, that I’ve taken on many occasions, and says they will swear to defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California. They didn’t say that they were going to work on their own personal, or they were going to interject their own personal beliefs into their decisions. The Architectural Board of Review and the members who abstained should have voted on the merits of Chick-fil-A, Chick, whatever the hell it is. Anyway, and since they can’t do that, and they can’t live up to their constitutional duty as that they take the oath of, I want them to resign. And if they don’t resign, as a citizen of Santa Barbara and a veteran who has put over 20 years of active military service and living in this community since I retired in 1970, I want you to replace them. It’s not that I want you to replace, I demand that you replace these people and make sure that they do, the people that you put in, do what they have sworn to do, do what they have taken the job to do, and not stick their own personal beliefs into something that they don’t have any, that they don’t have any right to do. Thank you.
John Blankenship will be the final speaker.
Madam Mayor and Councilman, my name is John Blankenship, and I’m the founding director of the Pierre Clyson Veteran Museum Foundation. And I’m here today for two reasons. One is to also tell you about being with Dan and Rusty here with the, trying to make that particular weekend of Veterans Day a reason to come to Santa Barbara. There’s going to be the race, which I am not going to run in. I wish I could. Then, that afternoon, there’s the concert at the First Presbyterian Church up at Constance and State at 2:00. That evening will be the Military Ball at Fest Parkers. That was 700 veterans in active duty last year. Then the next day, at 12:30, will be the Veterans Day Parade, of which, right now, we have 20 World War II aircraft lined up to fly down State Street. Not real low, no, but they’ll be overhead. And also, I don’t, just because of, I think Dale’s father was a Marine, today is the 70th anniversary of landing at Guadalcanal, and in the Solomons, where America struck back and led to victory. And it’s a very proud day for all Marines, of which I’m a Navy guy, so I, but I do love them. The other part is that Santa Barbara has a 100-year-old man, Colonel Harvey Walseth, who was there, and he turns 101 in December. And on the Thursday night, August 16th, at the Santa Barbara Maritime Museum, we’re having a program saluting Harvey and all the Marines and the Navy at Midway. So you’re all welcome. It’s at, like I said, it will be at 6:00. So, any questions? Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment. Move on to the consent calendar, and there’s an item to read.
Item three, records destruction for Finance Department, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the Finance Department in the Administration, Accounting, Environmental Programs, General Services, Risk Management, and Treasury Divisions.
Thank you. Without further objection, we’ll wait for the reading. Is there anyone who needs to take someone off, or something offers their motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Francisco.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee met today and accepted the interim financial statements for fiscal year 2012. We also recommended that the full council adopt the adjustments proposed by staff to that budget to revenue and expenditures.
Great. And that’s the next topic. So move on to item number nine.
Fiscal year 2012 interim financial statements for the 12 months ended June 30, 2012.
Thank you. Ms. Tora.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council. I’m Jill Tora, Treasury Manager from the Treasury Division of Finance, and I’m here today with Ruby Correo, our Accounting Manager. We’re going to present to you the fourth quarter financial report. And at this point, we’ve booked many of the entries, and we have the bulk of information into the general ledger, so we can begin to present you preliminary financial results for the year ended June 30th, fiscal year 2012. Today, I’ll start with revenues, and we’ll go through general fund revenues, see how our taxes and some of the other important revenues in the general fund came in last fiscal year. Then I’ll turn it over to, excuse me, Ruby Correo, who will go through general fund expenditures, talk about the preliminary results in enterprise funds, and wrap up with a discussion today with the proposed budget adjustments that are required at the end of the fourth quarter that need your approval today. So with that, we’ll start. Up here on the screen, you’ll see the tax revenues. The total tax revenue budget in the general fund for last fiscal year was 63.8 million. And you can see at the end of June 30th, our preliminary results showed that the actual collections are $66.3 million. That’s roughly $2.5 million over the amended budget, and a 4% increase over that budget, favorable budget variance. That represents a 7.2% increase in those same revenues over what we collected last fiscal year in 2011. So we can see that many of our, most of our tax revenues are recovering or have fully recovered from the effects of the recession. Starting with sales tax, you’ll see that the actual results to come in are estimated at 19.3 million. This is one revenue where we don’t have the information about our final payment. Sales tax is paid quarterly by the state, one quarter in arrears, so we’ll get our final number in September, mid-September, and come back to you with the final report on September 25th. If our estimate for the fourth quarter holds, and I think that there’s some upside potential with that, we’ve estimated 4.5% for that final quarter, and based on TOT results in the last quarter, I think that we may find it come in a little bit higher. But if that estimate holds, we will achieve 8.1% growth over the prior fiscal year. Moving down to property tax, that’s our largest general fund revenue. By the end of the year, this number is known and final at this point. We came in the year about $650,000 above budget, and that number includes an $860,000 payment from the county for the redistributed property tax from the elimination of the RDA. Were it not for that additional reallocation amount that we would have received, we would have been slightly short in this particular line item. But as it was with that final payment that came in at the end of June, our property tax was 4.1% higher than last year. TOT, as you know, has been a strong performer, and this is a final number. We know that at the end of June, we made $13.65 million last year on our 10% bed tax that’s unrestricted and receded into the general fund, represents 9.6% growth over last fiscal year, and is our best year for TOT on record. UUT didn’t perform quite so well this year. This, again, is a pretty final number, coming in at just under $7 million, or a 2.1% decline. That’s primarily due to declines in the telephone electricity... That's primarily due to declines in the telephone, electricity, and water sector. You'll hear more about the decline in water sales when Ruby goes through her presentation of enterprise funds. Business license was slightly off the mark, coming in just $27,000 shy of the budget. And property transfer tax, while this is our smallest tax, you can see that the growth to the prior year was 17.8%. The number of homes or property sales in the city last year was a 36.8% increase over the same period last fiscal year. But the increase was only 17.8% in terms of revenue growth, simply because the average of home price is still declining from previous years. We'll move on now to fees and service charges in the departments. And I'll just talk about some of the more notable budget variances. The first one being in the Community Development Department, which we expect them to end the year about $685,000 short of the adopted budget. This will come as no surprise to you. We've given you quarterly status reports on this due to the slow recovery of development activity after the recession. And it's just going to take some time for that whole sector to recover here in the city. Parks and Recreation Department did a good job of budgeting. However, they saw really strong recreation registrations this year, as well as increased facility rentals, particularly at the newly remodeled Correa Rec Center, which really helped them. And they came in 230, almost $240,000 above their adopted budget, and a growth of 14.7%. So it's good to see strength in that department. Public Safety, that combines the fees and service charges for both the Fire Department and the Police Department, coming in slightly short of budget. That's due primarily to the loss of revenue from RDA, where RDA was funding the restorative policing program that was not deemed an eligible enforceable obligation by the successor agency Oversight Board. And therefore, that revenue won't be realized, resulting in a slight budgetary, negative budgetary variance. Were it not for that, that would have shown a positive variance. Public Works came in ahead of budget by about $95,000 due to higher-than-anticipated engineering charges to the capital program, which is outside the general fund. But those engineering services, the fees for the staff time is reimbursed to the general fund. And then finally, the interfund category is short, and that's due almost exclusively to the fact that the RDA, the former RDA reimbursed the general fund for a number of salaries that budgeted in Community Development and the City Attorney's Office. The RDA was eliminated, thus went the reimbursement for that. But we did see some savings, at least in Community Development side, to cover some of that. Total fees and service charges, the annual budget was $20.4 million. The actual $19.66 million for a shortfall of roughly around $800,000, still showing 1.3% growth over the collections last year, but a budgetary shortfall this year, fiscal year 12. Here's a summary table summarizing the taxes, the fees and service charges, and the shortfall in the other revenues. That other revenue category includes miscellaneous revenues in the general fund, including intergovernmental charges, franchise fees, interest income, and it also includes fines and forfeitures. And the bulk of that shortfall has to do with parking citation revenue that fell short of budget this year, not due to anything other than vacancies in the parking enforcement officer positions. They really have trouble staying fully staffed, and that affects the number of citations. We saw an 8% decline in the number of citations that were written in fiscal year 2012 compared to a 3% decline in the revenue collected. So we're collecting more revenue per ticket, but just less tickets being written this past year. So our subtotal for these, the general fund actual revenues, we took in, on a preliminary basis, subject to some minor adjustments before the books are finally closed in September. But the collection's at $103,000.5. And that's a positive budget variance of roughly $1.5 million. Now, that just compares how we actually did to how we thought we were going to do. This doesn't mean this is the amount that goes into reserves or anything. This is a different type of analysis, just saying, what did we think we were going to do? How did we come in? When we factor in the anticipated year-end variance, now that's a revenue that will never be realized on an actual basis, because it represents expenditure savings that will be realized throughout the entire general fund throughout the fiscal year. We don't know exactly where to budget those savings, so we just put a plug into revenues. When you factor that in, the total general fund revenues over here, the year-end variance, it's a positive budget variance of $347,000. Now, as Ruby will talk about at the end of the presentation, there's a revenue adjustment that is necessary at the fourth quarter related to the eliminated, elimination of RDA. When you factor that in, the, we expect the final year-end revenue number to be about $137,000 short of budget, short of our plan. And with that, if there are no questions, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ruby Correo.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'll begin by presenting the general fund expenditures. And just like Ms. Tora indicated, these are very preliminary numbers. We are still in the process of recording of final expenditures to fiscal year 2012. I'll focus at that bottom row. The total budget, including the approved budget in June, any council adjustments that were approved during the fiscal year and prior year carryovers, takes us to a budget of $103.7 million. Our year-to-date actual is $102 million, which shows a favorable variance in expenditures of just over $3.5 million. All our departments are currently reporting to be under budget or just within budget. But like I just explained, we still have costs that need to be recorded to the prior year. So if we take that $3.5 million, oh, before I move on, I apologize. Major variance is in the Community Development Department. We did have six position vacancies throughout the year, some which were left unfilled the entire year. So a major part of that $1 million will materialize, and we'll see a savings within Community This next slide shows the year-to-date variance, as reported in the previous slide, of just over $3.5 million. We do have a payroll accrual, which are additional costs that need to be recorded to fiscal year 12 of about $1 million. Accounts payable, these are checks to vendors that are still owed, that we're still processing, that were for services that were provided by June 30th of about $350,000. And then encumbrances, which represent purchase orders that were opened at June 30th that we'll have to, still, we're still committed to pay off those contracts for $488,000. After adjusting for these additional costs, we still project we will have a favorable variance in expenditures of about $1.7 million. Moving on to enterprise funds. Our Water Fund did not meet estimated revenues, and we did report at our quarterly reviews that we were seeing this revenue was not going to meet projections. And so at the end of the fiscal year, we'll be short about $740,000. On the expense side, we're seeing a significant favorable variance of about $6 million. And most of it has to do with production and distribution costs related to water. Our water purchases were lower because water consumption was lower. Chemical supplies to treat our treatment plants were lower. We also saw a lower cost in debt service costs related to the state loan that is funding the CATER and Ortega treatment projects. Downtown parking, we saw a significant increase from budget and an increase from the prior year. And most of it has to do with higher parking revenues, particularly in the Granada Garage, where we have the highest number of permit holders and the highest rates. Airport, once again, we are not meeting our revenue projections. And we did report this at mid-year and third quarter, that due to the drop in passenger traffic, we are seeing a reduced parking revenues. We also had ongoing construction in the short-term parking lot that also caused for lower parking revenues for the airport. In order to address that revenue shortfall, the airport pulled back on some costs. They didn't fill about three positions in the department. And they also had savings in repairs and maintenance of equipment. A lot of their equipment at the new terminal is new and is under warranty, which meant they did not have to use their repair and maintenance budget. Golf course did not meet revenue projections by $126,000. Again, this is one of the areas that we were monitoring throughout the year. And in order to cover that revenue shortfall, the golf course did hold back on some facility maintenance projects, such as repainting the clubhouse. And so that savings and costs will offset the revenue shortfall in the golf course. And last, the waterfront also saw a significant increase of about $480,000, having to do with higher slip transfer fees, higher cruise ship revenues, and higher parking revenues as well. Moving on to proposed budget adjustments, I will turn it over to Finance Director Bob Samario, which, who will cover the first two items.
Madam Mayor, quick question. Ms. Correo, on the airport revenues, so June 30th, when did we start the Portland route?
Oh, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Portland route and the airport revenues, I would, because I knew that we were down up until that point in time, but my understanding is the Portland route has been wildly successful.
It started June 5th.
Okay. So, we haven't really seen any effect of that, and, correct, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. So as you know, I sent an email to all of you trying to explain the first item that was covered in our agenda report. We talked about this in fair amount of detail at the Finance Committee, so this is my third try. I want to just hopefully make this clear, because it is a very confusing item. So I'm probably going to go into more detail than you probably want to hear, but I just want to err on the side of being more clear in what this is. So as you all probably know intuitively, the IRS, or Internal Revenue Code, establishes limits on how much individuals can essentially defer their income through qualified retirement plans, whether it be 401Ks or even our deferred compensation plans, and IRAs and the like. They say you can only put so much aside and defer that to the future, because there's obviously a preferential tax treatment when you retire, that you're hopefully in a lower tax rate, so there's an advantage to defer income. With PERS, which is one of those plans, they don't provide any kind of limits at the front end. They don't say you can only put in $15,000 any given year, or $2,000 for an IRA, whatever that number is. They establish that limit at the back end by saying, we're going to limit how much you can receive through PERS in a benefit when you retire. So they're looking more at the back end, how much you earn through a benefit through PERS, and say, we're going to put a cap on how much we'll pay through our plan. And if any employee, which is very, very unusual, we've had two employees since I think ever, one about eight years ago that retired, that exceeded the limit that PERS is allowed to pay them through a benefit for a benefit, and one about three years ago. And this is the individual that's in the general fund. The other one was a water fund. So we had an individual retire about three years ago that exceeded that limit. And when an employee does exceed that limit, that PERS says we can pay from our PERS account, the city has to come up with that differential. We have to write a check to PERS so they can make up that difference, because they're not allowed to, under our Internal Revenue Code, to pay through their assets a benefit that exceeds that limit. And there's a reason for that, because what happens is, when an employee exceeds that limit, and we, they get that additional benefit through us directly, they actually get taxed differently from that amount. So for example, if they get $50,000 above the limit from us directly, that $50,000 in income is taxes wages. It's subject to Sufica or Social Security and Medicare, whereas their pension income isn't. It's not subject to those kinds of taxes, considered a pension. So that's why they, that's how they limit the, essentially the sheltering of your income to the future by putting a limit on that. So we had an employee, as I said, retire, who exceeded the limit. And in prior years, when the first employee retired, and then a few years ago, this employee, PERS allowed us to take that check that we wrote to them, PERS directly, and use, and offset what we paid to them every year under our normal annual required contributions. We paid millions of dollars to PERS. They said, well, just reduce your annual required contribution by that dollar amount. That way, you're not budgetarily impacted. And so we've never had an issue with this, even though we had an employee five or six years ago retiring that way and exceeded the limit, and one three years ago. In 2012, PERS changed the rules, because, and this is me talking to the chief actuary, they implemented a new financial or pension management system that didn't allow them to track these offsets. And so they said, I'm sorry, the system glitched that we didn't build into it. Now you have to write us a check, but you can't offset that amount to your normal contributions. So in effect, this year, for the first time, we had to write a check and couldn't offset that against our normal contributions. So we ended up having to pay $60,000 or $68,000 more this year than we had expected, and that's why we're here. The good news is that next year, and then in '14, the chief actuary has indicated to me that, because we raised this issue, and they didn't really do a good job of warning their member agencies, that they're going to allow us to offset in '13 and '14 the same cost. They just, it was too late to do it this past year. And they're hoping in that two-year period, they can fix their system glitch, so they can allow them to track this. But that's what this is all about. It's been happening already in the past for just two employees, but just because of this change that PERS has made this year in '12, that didn't allow for the offset, we see the budgetary impact of that. Any questions on that?
Sounds like we're going to get it back. Just bottom line, they're going to let us offset it in the future? Or do we lose one year?
Only for the future, because we've got to do this every year. But next, starting next year, they're going to allow us to go back to the old way and offset it like we've had in the past. Just this one year, it's a one-time impact.
Okay, so it's a one-year out.
Yep.
Adjustment.
Right.
All right, thank you. Madam Mayor, but, but that money is not, those payments are still due. If there's an offset, then it's, there will still be a liability in our, in our retirement fund for that, right?
That's correct. Councilmember White, so because we're paying $68,000 and PERS didn't offset that amount to us, they have that small amount of money as essentially a gain to them, that they're going to spread out over the next 15 years. So we'll see a benefit of that dollar amount over a 15-year period, so we won't even notice it. So we don't really lose it from an economic perspective, it's just really a budgetary impact for us. And then we have the next item, and I'm going to give you the real simple answer of what this explanation, because it is, in concept, fairly simple. We had an employee in the Police Department who retired after about 28 years of service, and during that period of time, that employee accumulated about 2,240 hours of sick time. And so they, and it's, you know, the fact that they don't take off sick is, is, time is essentially good, because we don't have to backfill with time and halves. But in the meantime, they're accumulating these hours that, in the end, when they retire, they're eligible to cash them out. They're not cashed out on a dollar-for-dollar basis. There's a complicated formula as to how we come up with what they're due, what the value of those hours are. And in this case, it comes, it worked out to $115,000, almost $116,000. I'd be happy to explain the methodology for how we came up with that dollar amount, if anybody's interested. But essentially, it's just the value that we calculate through a complicated formula that arrived at $115,000. The hours were more than a year's worth of service, 1.2, 1.1 years, so it's certainly less than their annual salary, this dollar amount. But it, but again, it's on a complicated formula that we use, and I'd be happy to go over that if you're interested. Okay. And the rest of the justice, Ms. Correo, going to cover, they all relate to this whole change in the RDA, the elimination of the RDA, and what the budgetary impacts of those
We reported a couple weeks ago with estimates on the impact of the RDA dissolution to the general fund. We finally have hard numbers, and so we're coming back requesting budget adjustments to, to cover those costs. The first one has to do with administrative costs, and this is really salary and benefits to previously funded employees through RDA, and also for legal services. This amount represents the amount that exceeds the limit per the legislation that dissolved the RDAs. Non-departmental, the property reserves row is what's covering those first two budget adjustments that Mr. Samario just went over. Property tax revenues, the $485,307 represents the amount of property tax revenues that will be covering the costs that were disallowed by the Oversight Board. The $331,476 is the transfer to general capital outlay. That's the amount for capital projects that were not deemed enforceable obligations. And the difference between that and the $485 is the administrative cost from Community Development. This next table here is the impact of those This next table here is the impact of those transfers from the general fund to the capital outlay fund. It's showing the, receiving the transfer in for 331, which is the revenue to that fund that will fund the increased appropriations for engineering costs and capital project costs, again, that were not deemed enforceable obligations. Now, the RDA bond fund, these four projects were approved by the Oversight Board as enforceable obligations. However, the Oversight Board approved a change in the source, meaning we were funding it through bond proceeds that we were holding from previously issued bonded debt, but the Oversight Board decided that these costs should be funded through the redevelopment property tax trust fund established by the county, which means we'll get reimbursed for these costs, and we can relieve the RDA bond fund by $479,000 that we'll be able to appropriate for future qualified projects.
So, what I would say is, that's good news.
That is good news. And this last section here just has to do with transferring those costs from the RDA bond fund to the successor agency fund, which, again, will be reimbursed for. That concludes the budget adjustments.
When do we expect the reimbursement to arrive?
Actually, that'll be covered this fiscal year, and then what that does is allows us then, when next spring, when we're, when the bond funds are freed up, is we'll just have $479,000 more of bond funds than we'd expected.
Okay. I just, I have a question on basically the bottom line, so for the general fund. So, you have, as I'm reading this, the revenues, we were, with all the different adjustments, $137,491 less than projected. And then on the expenditures, we were 1.684 million under budget, and so we didn't spend as much. So, if you take 168, take out the 137, I have $1,546 and change. So, is that basically the surplus in the general fund budget? And then, if so, what, that returns to reserves, and what happens?
Madam Mayor, I'll first say that your analysis is correct. So, we're, at this point, preliminarily expecting that what we're going to add to the bottom line of the general fund into the reserves is about one and a half million dollars, but that number could change up or down. It's more likely going to go up a little bit. As Ms. Tar indicated, we were estimating for the fourth quarter sales tax payment, which we'll know in September, that that's going to, we assume, to 4.5% growth, possible that it'd be higher than that, to the extent it is, given the trend. That'll just add to that number. So, that is a preliminary estimate, but its order of magnitude is going to be pretty close to where we end the year.
And based on the fiscal policies that we just adopted a couple of weeks ago, the idea now, this, because this is beyond what we had in the budget, so the policy now is to take half of that and look at general fund capital, one-time money, capital improvements, and then the other half can go back into the reserve policy. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And we wait until after the audited numbers before figuring that out?
Yeah, because, yes, the auditors are going to come out in September, I believe. They'll do their final work. We're still making some final adjustments ourselves to close the books before the auditors arrive, so the numbers are subject to change. And again, as I said, we're still waiting for the September sales tax number for the fourth quarter. So, by mid-September, we're going to be back to you here to give you the final numbers versus preliminary, how we end of the year, and what the bottom line benefit is to the reserves.
And it's the, so, let's just say it's $750,000 for capital one-time money. Are we looking to spend those funds this fiscal year, or put it in the budget for next fiscal year?
What we would recommend is we put it in the budget for next year.
On top of whatever else we have in the budget?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, thank you. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The RDA bond fund, what's, how much money do we anticipate to have in that?
We are holding that money in our own escrow accounts, and we have about $13 million.
How does that, that is money that can be spent over the next X number of years, or it's being accumulated?
We need to go through a period, through two reviews that have to, where we have to get the okay to move forward and spend those funds. At this point, they're kind of on hold until those two reviews are completed by an independent auditor.
Auditor and who?
Approved by the Department of Finance, the State Department of Finance.
State Department of Finance.
But the way it works is that, once we meet the provisions of the new state law, then the Oversight Board can approve projects that are, I forget the term, consistent with the provisions of the bonds when they were originally sold. So, it's a, it's a fairly normal test, basically back to the rules that we were under before. Though first, we have to go through these audits, and then have the Oversight Board approve that, and it actually gets us really to next spring. And then we'll have, and we will come to you with some recommendations on, you know, potential projects to use, basically projects that were already on the list that we didn't think we were going to get to.
Sure. And the dispatch center, where is that standing at this point in that?
That's potentially one of the projects, either from that source, or we also will receive, at some point in the next probably nine months, some additional, you know, there's a big check that we're going to write to the county of funds that we currently have in the bank, or we had in the bank, and then the county's going to rebate the city's share of those back. And so, that's a potential project also from those funds.
Great, thank you.
Mr. House?
Thanks, Mrs. Samario. Just a couple of questions real quick, so, and maybe Mr. Armstrong can help. The decision about the bond, the shift from the bond funding to the RDA funds, that happened at the committee level, the Oversight Committee level. Just real quickly, how did that, how does that come about? I mean, was that something that was initiated by the city in the conversation, or was it, because it seems like it's working to the city's benefit, which is seeming like pretty rare in this whole process. But, so how does, how does something like that come about, that decision?
I think a couple of things. First, with the state law that set up the Oversight Board and their approval process was new to all of us, including the Oversight Board. And I think when the Oversight Board first looked at these projects and decided how they wanted to, they knew that they were, that they were enforceable obligations under the law, but then they looked basically at two pots of money, the bond money, and then also the proceeds from property taxes. And in their mind, I think they said, "Oh, we can charge it to the bond funds, and then there will be more money from those property tax monies that would then be distributed to all the taxing agencies, including the folks they represented." Then, when the law was clarified, they went back and they said, "No, this, really, these can be, you know, it's consistent with the law to charge them to the property tax money." So, they took a second look at it, and I think reasonably then came to the conclusion that we had actually been advocating all along, that it'd be charged to the, basically this year's tax increment monies that were coming in.
All right, great. That was good to see reason prevail there. And then, Mr. Samario, where in all of this is the comprehensive annual financial report? That's the, that's the final report you make, where you summarize everything after all this, all the dust settles, right? And that happens way after September, isn't it, in the middle of the winter?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, we'll be back in late November, at the latest early December with our comprehensive annual financial report. It's a different discussion, of course, because it's not longer looking at budget to actual, it's just sort of, you know, how we did as a whole, as an entity. So, really, I think the most informative for you folks in terms of budgetarily, how did we do, is really today. And then in September, when we're back with the final year-end results, the cap will be, like I said, November, December timeframe, but that's, by then, I think we'll know what we know.
What I take from today's report is a sense of appreciation for the managers of each of the departments and the enterprise funds for being light on their feet, being able to really respond, and even, even with the change-ups that have been happening recently, been able to come up with strategies, and working with Mr. Armstrong and with the Finance Department, strategies to really end up where they've managed things, so that we don't see a trend downward, or a, you know, a black hole of some sort. They've been able to keep the departments whole in the process. So, my kudos to everybody who's worked on this.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, in terms of the sick time payout, do we know of any other employees who are getting ready to retire and have a whole bunch of hours that they might cash out, so we can prepare for this kind of payout?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, that's a good question. We don't know when people would decide they're going to retire. I think the individual question, it was really a surprise that, when they announced their retirement in two or three weeks, I think it came as a surprise to their department. So, we always, we can't always anticipate, we kind of have a sense of those things. We do track how many hours people accumulate, and we actually track on our books the related liability associated with those hours, so we know in the aggregate what our liability is, we just don't know we're going to have to pay it out. One of the things that we're going to be looking at for the next year financial cycle to help sort of these budgetary hits that are unexpected, is to establish a fund, like a benefits fund, so that we're accumulating funds on an ongoing basis to provide the money, so that when these things occur, we're not having to have a budgetary impact. We got the money in the bank, it's sort of like pensions are funded, they're funded along the way on advance, rather than waiting until the event occurs. And that's, that's our intention to address these things, so that we're not seeing these kind of hits and having to come back to council for an adjustment.
And I might add, we have always, over the years, had vacation cashouts and sick leave payouts for employees that probably in any given year are $400,000, $500,000, $600,000, and we've never budgeted for them. Instead, we've asked the departments to absorb them. I think what's, what we've seen the last couple of years is, we have had such tightened budgets, and in the police department specifically, because of the over-hiring that we've been doing in the police department, we haven't had the salary savings that we typically have, so there's no fudge factor. And so, in this case, you, there was no fudge factor in the police budget, and if we just charged this to them, as we would have done in the past, they'd probably go over budget. So, that's why you're seeing this, because everything has just been so tight, because we've got it down to, you know, less than 1% of their expenditures, or around 1%.
Mr. House?
Well, Madam Mayor, after all that, I move that we accept the financial year 2012 interim financial statements and approve the proposed adjustments to fiscal year 2012.
Your second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Move on to item number 10. Do you want to read item number 10, please? You did? Oh, hello, Chief.
Good afternoon. I have a report, I have no PowerPoint, but I'm going to share a few statistics with you. Fiesta was one of the quietest ones we've had. We made a lot of arrests, some DUIs, but very few high-profile and violent crimes. Most of them were drug-related, people on parole or probation violating their parole, which were felonies. But in terms of gang issues at Fiesta, zero. We saw very few attending. We did have some attending from outside of our area who were here peacefully. We had a variety of police departments here, and sheriff's departments, Ventura probation was here, and immediately recognized some of their guests here, and had some chats with them, but they were peaceful, and none of them were arrested, and they stayed and had a good time, which is what we all want, everyone to be peaceful and have a great time, and spend a lot of money, and I hope that they did. But it was very quiet, so I'm going to read you some statistics. In terms of citations, last year's Fiesta, and these statistics are only Fiesta, not the rest of the city. Last year, we had 331 traffic citations written, this year, we had 414. We had, last year, we had 106 parking citations, this year, we had 307. But that's, nothing having to do with the parade when we weren't citing, so that's, it still was high in other parts of the Fiesta, and the infractions themselves. Again, we had 48 felonies this year, arrests, last year, there were 32, but last year, the felonies had to do with violent crime. This year, the felony arrests, over 80% of them, as I mentioned before, were drug-related, parole violations, and those sorts of things. We had a few assaults, a few fights, but not even, you know, maybe I can count them on one hand. It was pretty peaceful the whole week, the mayor and I walked, I think, Saturday night, a lot of people, but all in all, it worked out very, very well. The other part of this is the overtime. Last year, we used almost 4,000 hours of overtime for Fiesta. This year, we were at 2,900. We started, which is an indicator of what it was like, because immediately on Wednesday night, we started sending folks home that were here on overtime immediately, and we stayed with our agencies that were here helping us, and we were fine. So, the overtime was much less this year for Fiesta than it was last year. And again, it's an indicator of the crime that was down, and the crime that was up were misdemeanors, if not citations. So, that's great news, everyone had a great time, and again, we made some arrests, but nothing of significance whatsoever. Our busiest nights, obviously, were Friday and Saturday night. The majority of those arrests were parole violations and DUIs. In terms of DUIs, we had, bear with me here for a second. We had 77 last year and 42 this year. So, all in all, a good Fiesta, and hopefully next year will be just as quiet as this one was. Before I go on to my others, if you have any Fiesta questions, we could probably do that now.
Anyone? Okay, go ahead.
That was my next thing. Outside of Fiesta, but sort of at Fiesta, is our friends who do the Fiesta Cruiser Ride. We had an estimated 1,000 riders in that. They meet at the pier, at the Dolphins, they ride to Golita and then come back and attempt to jump into the ocean. We have not had any jump into the ocean for several years now, because we're well, we're there for them. This is a mess, to say the least. We assign people-
You're talking about the bike rave now, right?
Yes, yes. We, but the actual name they call it is Fiesta Cruiser Ride. They refuse to play by the rules, they do not take city permits out. Basically, it's a blog invitation, and they just put it out to the world, and people from all over the place meet at the Dolphins, and off they go. We do plan for this every year somewhat. We do have between 10 and 15 people permanently assigned to that every year, and we do cite many. Rarely do we arrest anyone, but it is just a mess. We've tried to determine where the leadership is in this group, we can't figure it out. It's just a blog invitation, and here they come. We will continue to do that. We are already strategizing to maybe put more people on it next year, but again, we're talking about resources, and if we need to put overtime on this, we probably will have to. But it is a mess, we got a lot of calls about this group, again, estimated about 1,200 to 1,400, and they do cause an issue on the streets, they interfere with traffic, which is when we cite them all, just cause havoc around town, and it has just become sort of unmanageable. But we're going to continue to strategize, we've already had our debrief meeting to probably do twice the amount of resources to it next year. Last year, there was about 750, and this year was estimated about 1,200 to 1,400.
Mr. Otis?
Chief, were there any injuries associated with it?
There hasn't been, really. About three or four years ago, maybe three years ago now, we made quite a few arrests, because they were interfering with traffic, the officers went to cite them, and they actually took on my officers physically, and we started making arrests. But that has stopped, and that's really where it is.
So, is this a better view, does the deal just let it be and try to make sure people aren't hurt?
Well, that's, the key is to not have anyone hurt, them, or any other citizen, or the cops.
Right.
But sometimes, if we tell them not to come, more will come.
Right.
So, I think we need to try to manage it as best we can, and maybe put double the resources next year to that, those moments. Sometimes, we don't know when it's going to begin, so we've got officers standing around, and then we see them coming, and we all gather, and off they go.
And do motorists generally just stop and wait for folks to go by?
Yes. And I think we've been very lucky that there haven't been any road rages, if you will.
Right.
But the citizens are getting upset, and we get a lot of calls, and they have every right to be upset.
Right, and, but, and no confrontations, car to bike, as it were?
Not that we've noticed. I'm sure there are, but nothing that would rise to a crime or an accident.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, as you know, I encountered this ride, and I was driving in the opposite direction down State Street from Mitchell Trainacan and Perdido, so I saw six blocks of it, and it was a constant stream of cyclists continuously driving through red lights, hundreds of cyclists driving through red lights. At least in the section that I was in, I didn't see any police presence, and I did see, as you can imagine, with this constant stream of over 1,000 cyclists cruising slowly up State Street, the people on the side streets were prevented from crossing, and I did see at Equestrian Avenue- on the side streets were prevented from crossing. And I did see, at Equestrian Avenue, there was a small, compact park right there, waiting, and waiting, and waiting. And finally, a pickup truck behind it just swerved around it, and just went into the stream of traffic. And I was very fortunate that no one was hurt. I think between the, and I saw other confrontations as well, in that six-block stretch. So, I think it's just a matter of time, till there's a serious injury or death. I also think that we, as a city, can't allow this kind of mass law-breaking to go forward. And I think that either the people who are in this ride get a permit for what they want to do, or it doesn't happen. We wouldn't allow this with anything else that happens at Fiesta.
I think, one of the things that we would love to see, if they would do it, and they won't, is take out permits. Once that happens, like with other events, we would have to really pour a lot of energy into it. Motorcycles, stopping traffic, the police department escorting them all the way. And there are other entities involved, the CHP, the sheriff's department, because they go to Golita, they go on the highway, and they're fed up with it as well. We're meeting with them in about a week to debrief, because they did assist us in Fiesta. But I hear and feel your frustration. That's ours as well. We would love to stop it. I'm not sure we can. But to put the resources in it, and no one get hurt, we'd have to put a lot of resources into this. So would the CHP and the sheriff's department. The one thing that I can tell you is that we probably put more resources than the other two entities put together to this, within the city. CHP and the sheriff's department didn't put as many resources as we did. But we're going to talk about it with them. Love to stop it completely. Not sure we can. They have a right to ride these bikes, but they also have an obligation to obey the rules of the road. And we did our best with 10 people. We just didn't get it done as well as we could have with 10 people, and we were certainly outnumbered 100 to 1. So, it was tough. It was tough.
Mr. House?
Chief, just to, at least to chime in a little bit on this one. Yeah, as everybody did, we've heard from different constituents who are concerned about it, and concerned primarily for safety, just as you mentioned. And I think you're taking a wise approach. So, if leadership were to be found, the message would be, would you please coordinate with us, talk to us, see what we can do to make this safer? Is that the request, or?
We've made that request every year, and no one takes on the "I'm the leader" role.
Understood.
And like I said, this is put out in a blog, and everyone who reads it and wants, and cares to join it, shows up. We never know how many until they get there. And this year, with over 1,000, and only 10 of us, it was, it was pretty unmanageable.
Well, these kinds of things happen around the world, and they only get bigger with time. And where cities have managed, and this is something we might think of, I mean, I don't know how we managed to get our hands around it, but in other cities, it's become actually kind of a celebratory kind of event. The sequel to Vias that happened in Bogota, and LA's done it, New York's done it, San Francisco, some of it can actually be very successfully done if it's well orchestrated and managed, like the marathon that was here earlier today, for instance. But obviously, right now, it's at that stage where it's just kind of a mass phenomenon, you know, and people just show up. But perhaps at some point, it could mature and become something that could be done responsibly.
Well, responsibly will be tough for this group, because they really have no purpose but to cause a mess. There really is no purpose. There's no cause. And we have already begun to strategize on this, and we already have a few ideas that we've never done before, that I'll talk to you about next year at this time as to how they worked. But we're going to give it our best again next year. But obviously, we're going to have to at least double the resources that day.
Thank you, sir.
Well, and perhaps trying to connect now with the Santa Barbara Bicycle Coalition, or other groups that they may know, they may know people that might help.
We've tried that, yeah. It's tough. It's just a mess, I'm sorry to say. That's the best way I could put it.
Mr. House?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A question for Mr. Wiley. If there's something like this that goes on every year that we know about, and we can anticipate it happening, via blogs or word of mouth, does the city hold any liability as far as public damage, injury, those types of things? Because we do know it's coming, even though we're trying to apply enforcement issues to it. But you have 1,000 people breaking law in an anticipated manner. What do we stand on that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, generally, the answer would be no. The law is pretty clear. The Tort Claims Act is pretty clear that the city can't be held liable for the independent criminal actions of others. So, and that really, pretty much, by and large, cuts off potential liability. You know, there's always circumstances where there might be some sort of dangerous condition of public property, but under some circumstances, if someone violates the law, they may be not able to sue the city if they violate the law. I don't think that's a potential concern.
I was thinking, I mean, I understand that on a technical basis, but I'm thinking, if something is anticipated and known, that you're aware it's going to happen, like the Philotopia issue in Island Vista, or things like that that are coming up. Obviously, we're not going to close down the city of Santa Barbara to keep these folks off the road. But I didn't, you know, there's a lot of very frustrated citizens out there, and Mr. Francisco said, we're really lucky that nothing untoward's happened so far.
Mr. Hachis?
Well, Chief, of course, one of the things you're fighting is the fact that it's popular because it is illegal. It's like, you know, smoking out behind the barn when you don't even like a cigarette, but you're doing it because you're not supposed to. So, I don't know how we're going to, actually, I saw one or two friends ride by. I'll see if I can get ahold of them and find out more about this.
Maybe they're the leaders, and we probably want to talk to them.
Please, please continue.
Thank you. I want to share with you some, just two or three high-profile crimes that have occurred that some of you have read about, probably all of you. But I want to talk about the gang issue first. I don't have specific statistics, but I will tell you that it's been pretty quiet on the gang front for the last 30 to 60 days. For a variety of reasons, we've been very aggressive and proactive. We've had a lot of youth camps where, believe it or not, a lot of the kids that gave us problems last year, we're at camp this year. So, the timing is always good. But also, the community. The community is calling us sooner. I believe that the strides that we've made with the East Side groups and the West Side groups to collaborate, many of you were at the Saturday event a few months ago. That has gone over great, because we're getting more citizens to call us when things are about to happen on both sides of town. That has been great. The one thing that did happen this last Tuesday, at the Franklin, across street from the Franklin Center, was a pretty horrible, horrific crime of assault. It could have turned into a murder. And this was gang-related. We are investigating this crime, and we're on the heels of solving it. But I will tell you that the biggest issue, and a lot of folks came up to me over the weekend, especially at Guadalupe Church, I was there a couple of times, as you might imagine, to have some meals during Fiesta. But kidding aside, plenty of people are very upset on the East Side, because they are being intimidated by gang members at the Franklin Center. They cannot go to the clinic. They can't go to the library. And we have evidence of that. So, we are going to start getting more aggressive. We're talking families and children, trying to get to the clinic, and gang members from that area telling them that that park, that center, belongs only to them. So, we have started today at 9:00 in the morning, and will for the next three to four to six weeks, we'll be conducting all patrol briefings at the Franklin Center and in the parking lots, and getting out on foot, and talking to the community, and doing that with every police officer that's assigned to the city. We're going to start our day there. We're going to start our night there. We're going to start our morning, which is 12:00 AM, at the Franklin Center. Because it is ridiculous, unacceptable, that these young men who choose to be gang members, who say that we're racially profiling, to intimidate and threaten families that are just doing the right thing. It's unacceptable. So, I'm going to let you know here in advance that you'll probably get some phone calls, but that's why we're doing it. And we're not going to apologize to anybody for protecting them. The community's upset, upset with their kids being intimidated, and families not being able to enjoy that facility. Unacceptable. On the hiring front, changing gears, of course. We have been, given approval by Mr. Armstrong to, of course, overhire, under direction of this mayor and council. We are hoping to send 10 young men and women to the police academy in October. We have, I've recently given three conditional job offers to two women and one man, and we're hoping to get seven more in the next several weeks, and hopefully send 10 to the academy. We currently have one in the academy who will graduate the first week in October, and the following week, the 10 that we're going to send begin that academy. We're doing this in anticipation of more retirements that are coming up, and that we're hearing about, and we really want to get ready for that. We want all these people out, and if it all works out, then next year, we'll have all these people out before Fiesta. So, timing is everything, and I thank you for your support of the overhiring, and Mr. Armstrong as well on that. That's very, very important. Other crimes, as you read, Officer Tudor, who's our drunk-driving team officer, pulled over a vehicle because their light was broken. And he pulled it over to tell the guy that his light was broken. 30 minutes later, we have 18 weapons, boxes of ammunition, and all the weapons stolen in Northern California. The gentleman who was driving the vehicle had a warrant of $150,000 for burglary and assault, and he was also a rapist. So, Officer Tudor, paying attention to the vehicle code of a broken taillight, turned into something very huge. And we're very proud of Aaron for doing that. It comes on the heels of Aurora, Colorado, and then in Wisconsin, with all these weapons. And here, we had a 33-year-old person and others in the car, who were driving through our town with 18 weapons, including assault weapons, fully automatic weapons, in our community. There's only one thing to do with those types of weapons, and they were all stolen. So, I think Aaron Tudor deserves a big thank you for his work and his tenacity, and we're really, really proud of him. A couple of others, real quick, and I think this is close to our hearts, and every time I come here, we talk about taggers. We talk about the graffiti. And we have been making weekly arrests on taggers. The interesting thing, as I mentioned before, is probably 99.9.9% are not gang members. They're people who are tagging our streets and destroying property, and we've made quite a few arrests on that on all watches. So, we're very proud of that. Then lastly, on the crime front, as you know, we had serial rapists. We're still investigating some more crimes. We're coming up with even more victims. So, that investigation continues, but we're very proud of our detective bureau and all that they're doing. And it's a tough time, because the victims are just so traumatized, and have been afraid to report it until now, that we have the person in custody. So, this is going to get bigger, but he is in custody. Lastly, a couple of things. S&amp;G Acquisitions Company has donated to our Explorer program $5,000. We want to thank them. That's to buy uniforms for our young men and women who are part of our Explorer program, and to also pay for two off-site competitions against other Explorer groups around the state, for their rooms and their meals and travel. So, we want to thank today S&amp;G Acquisitions for doing that. They also donated $10,000 to our PAL program. In fact, our summer programs this year were fully paid for by that company. We were not going to have a summer camp for youth this year. But we had it, and it literally came in about six hours before we were about to tell all these kids who had signed up that there will be no camp. So, we really want to thank them for their generosity and support of our kids. Finally, two things. We've received two grants. We received a traffic grant recently from the Office of Traffic Safety for two separate grants, Sobriety Checkpoint Program and a Selective Traffic Enforcement Program. One of them is $103,000, and the other one's for $86,000. And these grants will be, these monies will begin being utilized on October 1 for that. And really, finally, a grant of $215,000 that I was able to procure from Homeland Security. Over the last few years, we've been very concerned about the security of the police department, in terms of employee parking, especially at night. We do make some arrests in our own parking lot. We do have crimes happen at the police department, because there is no security to any parking, especially to those employees who work late at night, men and women. So, we were able to secure $215,000 that we're going to utilize for security gates and some cameras. And we're going to be working very closely with Public Works to make that happen, but we have the check in hand, and we're ready to go. And we're working closely with Public Works to make that happen, and our employees definitely deserve that. After about five or six years of trying to find the money, I was able to get it from the Homeland Security folks with the federal government. And with that, my report is concluded, and I'll take any other questions that you might have.
Thank you. Mr. House?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Chief, I just want to say, right off the bat, how much I appreciate the work that you're doing in the community to, to deal with the intimidation factor at places like Franklin Center. Bullying in the schools, and with the young people, and intimidation, which is sort of the adult version of that, are completely unacceptable. And I know that some of the stuff that we've been talking about has got controversy written all over it. This, in my mind, shouldn't. This is really important, and I'm glad that you're stepping right up to that. And thanks for giving us a heads up in the public as well.
You're welcome.
With that in mind, how's it going with the school resource officers and the coordination with the, with the schools, in terms of the presence of police in a constructive way on the campuses? And do we have that anymore? I think that was part of what we're hoping to get back in place. So, where does that stand?
We didn't have it for several years, but when school begins this year, we will, our school resource officer will be full-time at the school.
That's so great. And that's something I know was really valued and appreciated when it was before, and I know the counselors and the teachers and everybody appreciate that.
Well, I want to thank you, because, all of you, because we're able to do that with the overhiring, you know, and those that are coming out of the academy. And once they come out of the academy and they go in, we're able to use another person, seasoned officer for that. And Dr. Cash and I have been working on it during the summer. I promised him he would get it back. I'm not so sure we'll get Dare back, but we're certainly going to do the school resource officer. And we really need two school resource officers. So, as we begin to overhire and see more officers come out in the field and pass probation, we will have that opportunity, maybe have the second one, because we used to have two years ago. But for now, we're going to have the school resource officer begin his first day in the fall.
Well, it makes me think about how important it is, when we have the new folks coming into our department that aren't already from our community, so people that come from outside, the lateral hires and some of the new people that come in. What's your strategy for having them really get to know the neighborhood and get to know the people here as they grow in their position? Because it seems like if they lived elsewhere, and then they just come here to work, you know, where and how would they really get to know the, not just the lay of the land, but the people here? So, what, how do you do that? How do you really integrate them into the community and have them get to know folks?
We do have a strategy for that. We have a plan for that. The beats, the patrol beats, I've assigned a variety of lieutenants to them. They're like many chiefs. They attend a lot of the community meetings. We're taking the officers to those community meetings, one recently on the East Side at the school, where we had probably quite a few individuals show up. And we took many police officers, some on duty, some that were off-duty, to meet the community. But it really goes both ways. And that's the reason, especially in the Spanish-speaking community, that in October, we're going to have another Spanish-speaking Citizens Academy. So, we're really not taking it on all ourselves. We have a lot of folks in the community that are helping us with Neighborhood Watch, and they're really recruiting some people for our Spanish and English Citizens Academy courses. So, it's really a partnership with the community to do that. And it's working out pretty well.
All right, great. And then, lastly, how's it going with the cameras in the, in the police cars, and where does that stand right now?
The next time I sit in front of you, I'll tell you who the final company is. It's down to two companies that we're looking at. We're currently doing some site visits to those companies, and they're competing. We started with about six or seven, and we're down to two. We should, we should know before the end of the month who we're going with, and we'll move forward with it.
Great, thank you, Chief.
Mr. Hachis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, we had a shutdown of some marijuana shops, correct? Thanks to federal action. Have we seen an effect of that on the streets at all, in your opinion?
No.
Okay. The felony releases from state to local, any effect on our streets?
Yes. We're seeing some- We're, we're seeing some effects already of early releases. The recidivism rate is, is rising a little bit, not to a panic mode, but it is happening. And we are being impacted by it all the time. Fortunately, what we re, we did, we have another plan with a, with a specific set of officers who are assigned to oversee those individuals in a special way to make sure that they're keeping with what they're supposed to be doing. But it has impacted us.
So are we making some rearrests and sending them back, then?
We're making rearrests and sometimes they get sent back.
Okay. On State Street, and this is for Mr. Wiley as well as for you, I sometimes see people that are virtually camping out, taking over men, not only one, but two benches with all sorts of gear and then maybe a dog or two. And then spread in front of that is something that purports to be a commodity for sale. I don't know, sometimes it's rocks, whatever, but no person there. What restrictions and what application of the law can we play there? Perhaps I'll start with you, Mr. Wiley.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hachikis, what you're describing, there, there's several city ordinances that prohibit that sort of thing. For example, we have a city ordinance that prohibits blocking pedestrians or prohibits blocking the use of the sidewalk. And I, I've seen this myself. When people lay stuff out, whether it's blankets or jewelry or rocks or whatever, they're blocking the sidewalk and they can be cited for violating that city ordinance. We also have an ordinance that prohibits any selling on the sidewalk. And that includes the scenario where it's clear that they call it a donation, but it, it's clear that it's, there's a quid pro quo going on of, of some object being transferred for money. So they can be cited for that. But yeah, generally, and then, of course, we do have an ordinance as well based on a one that was validated by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal that prohibits sitting or lying on the sidewalk of State Street. You can't sit on anything on State Street except one of the benches or there are exceptions for during parades when we allow people to sit on blankets and chairs. But those are, those exceptions are pretty clear only during a parade.
Right. And is there any prohibition of camping out all day on a bench?
No, if someone is actually just sitting on a bench, you know, that's perfectly innocent activity. It could be just an elderly person.
Okay, so, but for a shop owner or somebody coming down, walking down the street who sees what I described before, is that a 911 call?
No.
So what should they do? Because they want to take action.
Well, I think, you know, the, the, there are several numbers they can call, 897-2400 and, and our dispatch 2412. But a 911 really, we really ask people to, to really think about that.
Okay, so the police administrative number they should call?
Yes. And it will, you know, our beat coordinators are out there. Our non-sworn liaison officers are out there. Our bicycle officers are out there.
And can they take action to prevent this?
Well, we can attempt to, we can try to. But in terms of a 911, we really encourage people to understand how important that is not to do for that.
So forget the 911, but if somebody says, look at all this, this is a terrible mess here, can somebody come along and clean it up, as it were? Move the stuff, get it off the sidewalk? What do we do? Because I, people feel frustrated by this.
Well, we do a variety of things. Number one, we'll, we'll respond to it. It's not going to be sirens and, and, but we're going to get there. Most of the time, we're calling our beat coordinators or our folks on the bikes or the non-sworn folks that can go and check it out. Many times, we do pick it up. But every time we do that, guess what we have to do? We have to take it to property and evidence because it allegedly is someone's property and we have to hold it.
Well, sure, but you do that once or twice and the guy's not coming back. That's the point.
Well, then eventually, we do throw it away.
Okay. All right, so I'm just expressing citizen concern here. People do want to know how to contribute to keeping our city great and, and not turning it over to folks that are just taking advantage of us.
And for the most part, though, I will tell you that my beat coordinators and people like John Khati in the back and all the people on bicycles, we're looking out for that all the time.
Okay.
But we're, there's six or five or six of them and they're going citywide on the bikes, especially at the beach. And, and at times, it's, I'll be honest with you, it's going to take us a while to get there, but I promise you, we, we will get there.
Okay.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We, we heard from our budget folks a while back that, that the, the parking citations were down. And she at least was speculating that it, it might be because we're, we're short on meter.
Parking enforcement officers.
Parking enforcement folks. Yes. Can you just, can you give us an update on that?
Well, they're, they're parking enforcement officers and we are down probably two, maybe three. We have one on long-term injury. We've had some leave and we're currently doing backgrounds on about six folks, I believe. And we're hoping that two of them work out of the six and make the hires as soon as we can.
Any other questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Any council member committee assignment reports